Okay, well, I don't have an agenda here. But let's go ahead and call to order the study session for Thursday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. I guess if people wanted to call in, they were instruct or calling in and watch their instructions on our website on how to do that. This time I'll go ahead and take a roll call, starting with my on my right council member Wook.
Jenny Wook, Council.
Uh, council member Rodenberg.
Lee Rodenberg, City Council.
Councilmember Himes.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Franch.
Here.
Uh, city administrator Tony Pisecchi.
Here.
Uh, Jeff Langham, Public Works Director.
Here.
Mike Simmons, City G I S.
Here.
Uh, Josh Seker, uh, Assistant City Clerk.
Here.
All right, in terms of me and Mr. Emery, I apologize, I don't know what your title is, but Ashley Emery. There, dear Will, I'm here, okay? Uh, is there anyone that I have missed? If not, please state so. Okay, uh, again, I don't have my agenda in front of me, so I don't know what is next on the agenda.
All it's on the agenda is the discussion item, which is storm water, storm utility revenue structure. And I'm just going to give it to Jeff and Ashley to take it away.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Arasal, thank you, Tony. Um, Mike Simmons is controlling the screen now, he's bringing up what we call a story map. Using our G I S tools. So it's essentially a slideshow, but it's more interactive than a slideshow. So here we go. Thank you for joining us here today, we are talking about city stormwater revenue. This was, as noted below here, this is based on an open house that we've had and a few other items. As you probably know, the city created its stormwater utility back in nineteen eighty-four. And as you can imagine, a lot has changed in our city since nineteen eighty-four. Not just how properties have developed, or which properties have developed. But also the awareness of environmental impacts due to development and also the establishment of reg- environmental regulations on development. At today's study session, we're going to have an overview of why we're considering changes to the way the city funds its stormwater revenue. We're going to be reviewing the progress that's been made since we last had our discussion on this topic back in June, it's a study session on June tenth. And we're looking as staff to receive direction from council on a few key items before progressing into the next steps. What we're not going to be talking about today is, uh, we're not going to be talking about stormwater monthly rates. Those are established already by code, and this study on stormwater revenues is not looking to change those monthly stormwater rates. Uh, that's going to be a separate process that council will be tackling in two thousand and twenty-two. So I, there was a memo that was sent out, hopefully you had a chance to read that memo prior to this meeting, and there was also a link in that memo to September open house. If you watch that September open house, you might see some information that's similar, but there's a lot more information that we're going to be presenting here today. Just a housekeeping item, uh, as we get into this, you'll see the slides have numbers in parentheses at the top of the title of the slide. Uh, if you have a question on the slide, feel free to ask it at that point, or just write the slide number down and we can come back to it later. So, Mike, if you don't mind, moving on to the first slide. So just real quick, here's our staff team who's been working on it. Um, myself, Bree Ellis, currently on maternity leave, but she's put a lot of effort into this, Lisa Crassus has jumped in now that our, she's being our utility billing technician. Uh, Maureen Whittaker, she's on interview panel right now, otherwise she'd be with us, Mike Simmons, he's, uh, put a lot of this presentation together and grinding a lot of the data. And then Ashley Emery, who was introduced, he's with Peninsula Financial Consulting, he's been doing our utility rates both for bonding, uh, for rate studies, for comprehensive plans, for actually, it's it'd be well before my time, it's got to be twenty years now, I'm thinking. So. Lucky to have Ashley. Um, so yeah, so sorry, Mike, go ahead. Uh, so I want to start just by looking at, uh, how the city has grown in the past forty years, essentially since nineteen eighty-four. The green outline and shaded area is the way the city looked in nineteen eighty-four, city limits. And then the reddish-orange is where this, how the city looks today. It goes from one point four five square miles to six point two seven square miles, quite a bit of growth. And to top that, these are the same scale, Mike pointed out to me, these are the same scale maps, they're just not showing the same area necessarily. But the one on the left is where our storm system, what our storm system looked like in nineteen eighty-four, and the one on the right shows it today. And then you can see there's a screen on the left side that, on the bar that shows just how much we've increased, so significant increases in our stormwater infrastructure in the past forty years. Now we're going to talk briefly, just an overview of our permitting requirements. You've probably seen this a lot, N P D S, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, it's a federal requirement through the E P A. It's implemented though on the state level by Department of Ecology. That N P D S permit, we have two, we have multiple, actually, N P D S permits to the city, but the one we're focusing on today is for stormwater. We also have an N P D S permit for the wastewater, but what we're focusing on today is our stormwater N P D S permit, and that has many requirements in it. That, uh, permit has been with us since our first permit we received in two thousand and seven. And it requires us to do stormwater planning, uh, public outreach and education, and all those items listed there, there's a lot that goes into uh, meeting the requirements of the N P D S permit. And we have to recoup the costs to implement those, the requirements of the permit. And by doing that, we have we use the time of twenty-three different staff members, not twenty-three F T Es, but we use twenty-three different staff members to help implement our stormwater program on operations and engineering. And that relates to almost ten thousand hours a year, and as of two thousand and twenty, just stormwater related. And on the right side of the screen, you'll see, uh, Mike put together some images of what that means to manage our stormwater system. The next, we're going to jump into what are our stormwater costs, so there's a table in front of you now that shows what our stormwater costs are for two thousand and twenty-one and how they are dispersed amongst those various expenses in terms of percentage. You can see though that these costs would be here that we would have to pay regardless of how much runoff comes or how much rain comes out of the sky, how much runoff comes off of our streets. This is the cost simply to operate our utility, we have to pay these costs regardless. On the sidebar, you'll see what those expenses go to, it's a whole host of things there. And so Mike's going to show you, uh, now an interactive map, and it's, it's comes to one, one of the main reasons why we're here today, and one of the main reasons why we're starting to talk about this is, is since nineteen eighty-four, for all intents and purposes, the stormwater code hasn't been adjusted, but we've seen a lot of changes in our stormwater utility and a lot of changes in stormwater regulations and changes in the way the city bills its stormwater, and they're not consistent anymore. So Mike's going to walk through a couple of examples of how we're not, we're not consistent, and we have some inequalities that we think we need to address. Go ahead, Mike.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Yeah, one of the, one things that we kind of missed on our intro, I think that I probably should have popped back in there, um, was just a quick definition of the way that we bill, which is an equivalent billing unit or an E B U, you'll hear that soon. Uh, and that's, that's directly related to some of these examples that I'm going to be showing you now. Um, so those E B Us, we base also, base off of square footage of hard surfaces within, uh, different properties. And so I'm going to just walk through a few examples of some residential and commercial, uh, properties right now. Demonstrating the size of the area, the amount of hard surface in that area, and then their E B U or their billing unit. And this will really bring to light, you know, kind of why it, why we need to address some of these, uh, kind of inequalities that might be out there. Um, especially when it comes to the commercial side, um, currently all residential are, are built at one E B U per residential, um, plot, so let's just take a quick tour around the harbor, I'm going to head south first to, uh, one of our older neighborhoods. Develop late eighties, eighty-six, eighty-seven, when most of these homes were developed. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and just click on a little pop-up there for this Briarwood Hollow, uh, which is just a smaller subdivision down the Briarwood Lane area. Um, and the, the things to note here, uh, if you can see that pop-up, are the number of parcels that are contained within this fifteen acre area. Uh, the amount of hard surface area is two point six one of that fifteen acres, giving it a percent of hard surfaces at seventeen point three. And I'm going to zoom in just a little bit further, and you can see some of the hard surfaces that'll show up for you. And there's some, there's roofs, there's driveways and sidewalks, there's back patios and porches, things of that sort that are included in these calculations. And so out of this lot with twenty-three part residential parcels on this fifteen acres, we're getting one billing unit per parcel of the residential, so that's going to be twenty-three E B Us coming from this fifteen acres. I'm going to zoom us back out, we'll head to another, another, uh, situation, residential situation. We'll head to the newer Rosedale Village off of Rosedale Street. Uh, this one, I believe, is again, is just one single parcel with a total area of twenty-seven and a half acres. When we add up all of the hard, hard surfaces for that one, we're looking at seven acres, which makes it approximately a quarter percent hard surfaces. Again, with eighty different residences in there, we're getting eighty E B Us or eighty billing units out of this one twenty-seven acre parcel. Going to head up to Gate Harbor North area here real quick, we'll take a look at one more newer residential again. Uh, the Ridge at Gate Harbor up by Costco here. This one, we're at a hundred and twenty-two parcels on nineteen acres, and seven point three being hard to, a little over a third of, of it being hu- percent hard surfaces. And again, we're getting one per residential parcel, so out of this nineteen acres, we're getting a hundred and twenty-two. Out of the seventeen at Rosedale, we're getting eighty-eight, and out of the fifteen at the Briarwood, we're getting twenty-three. Let's go ahead and I'm going to take you back down south, try not to get busy on this adventure. And we're going to head to a couple of the newer and a couple of the older areas here. Now, we're going to jump into a little bit of commercial now. Um, we're going to start at Harbor Plaza, uh, which was developed in nineteen seventy-nine and, and as a caveat, yes, that was part of the county at that point before it was annexed, and so it was developed in the county, however, is now part of the city. We're going to look at this one, it's comprised of three, only three parcels for a total of fourteen acres. Hard surface amount at twelve, which puts it, the hard surface is very high at about eighty-four percent. That's something that we would expect in a commercial, that's fine, there's parking lots, uh, significant roofing, et cetera, et cetera. But now if we look at this E B U multiplier for this commercial development here, we're at two hundred and forty-eight. And I'm not exactly sure how many businesses are in this area, um, but there's probably maybe a couple dozen that are within that shopping area, but this, this Harbor Plaza makes up for two hundred and forty-eight E B Us. We're going to jump across the freeway to just a little bit of another, uh, one that development that's been here for a little while. Uh, the new, the Barteld Ross area since ninety-five, again, this is only one parcel, nine point eight, eight point five acres of hard surface, eighty-six percent. They're on a multiplier of seven. So a similar percentage of hard surface as our Harbor Plaza down below. But if you look at those E B multipliers, again, two hundred and forty-eight to seven. Let's come back across the freeway, we look at Petco and the new Fred Meyer, or this Petco area here, uh, turn that off. The Petco Oceans Five area, we're at seven point six, again, eighty-five percent hard surface, that's kind of the numbers to focus on, and again, an E B multiplier of six. Again, versus the two forty-eight or the seven. Um, and then we have some air, commercial areas as well. We'll head back to Gate Harbor North, bear with me just a little bit longer. And we've got Costco, Home Depot, Target areas here. And we'll pop on a Costco first, and we'll see that they're at seventeen and twelve acres, a seventy-one percent hard surface and an E B multiplier of only one. And I believe that is the same with Home Depot with an E B multiplier of one. Target has an E B multiplier of one, and you can see that these percentages are staying, you know, in the high range that we would expect of a commercial. And one more example to the south that'll help highlight again, just some of these inconsistencies since we've started digging into the data. We'll just head down here to the old Seven Seas Brewery, uh, lot here. And if we look at this at three, it was three thousand and six Judson Street, one parcel, one and a half acres, the entire thing is almost developed at a hundred percent hard surface. And there are twenty-nine E B Us as their, as their billing units. So again, we have, you know, some areas that are fifteen to twenty acres that are getting one E B U, others that are almost not even two acres and up at twenty-nine, twenty-nine E B Us. So as we started digging into the data, these are some of the things that kind of made us take a step back and stop and go, this just doesn't seem right. So we need to kind of talk about what, why that is, and maybe some things that we can do to, to address those. And it's a good time, as Jeff mentioned, with the increased environmental, uh, regulations, the fact that this hasn't been uh, maybe fully redone since nineteen eighty-four, um, with some of this hard data now that we can look at, uh, might be a good time to, to do so. So with that, I'll hand it back over to Jeff then.
All right, thanks, Mike. So Mike's shown us some in, the, the inequities that we have throughout our stormwater system, there's a bunch of reasons why we have these inequities. It's not worth going into the details of how they came to be, but let's just say it's, it's developed over many years and for many reasons. And so, but we staff have recognized this, we addressed this with council, and, uh, we want to be able to fix these issues, so go ahead and advance, Mike. So what we've been doing is we put this in the budget for two thousand and twenty-one. We implemented a contract with Ashley Emery, brought him on board, and then we had a study session in June to get some initial direction from council. Then we took that direction from council, we looked at our options, we put together some plans and we uh, and some direction that we think we wanted to present to the public, we had oh, two open houses in September, got some input, and then drafted some code changes and presented that to the Public Works Committee in October. Public Works Committee listened and said, there's a lot here, we need to have a bigger discussion with all of council, so that's what spurred us on today. All right, next slide, Mike. Thanks. So one of the things that we've been doing and working on is code changes. And with the memo that you were provided for this meeting was this draft section of new, of, of code, essentially repealing old fourteen, chapter fourteen-ten and putting in a new fourteen-ten. Um, there were many changes that were made to this chapter, most of them were small changes. Um, it was a little overwhelming to look at them using track changes, so we didn't use track changes, the, the code is available, of course, online if you want to compare it. But what I wanted to do today was just provide an overview of the major changes, and so I'm just going to go through some of these sections here and talk about what the major changes were. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have as we go. So I'm going to start off with the definition section, fourteen-ten zero one zero. Definition B and definition I, developed and undeveloped, we updated those to make them simplified. Uh, they were a little complicated the way they were written, so we've made them very simple. Uh, definition C, that's a key that Mike was referring to earlier, was the definition of an E B U, currently it's twenty-two hundred square feet. Well, it's supposed to be an equivalent billing unit, which is resident, which is in terms of consistency with both water and storm or wastewater uh, equivalent residential unit and equivalent billing unit, so we wanted to go back and compare it the same way we do with water and storm wa- or water and wastewater, sorry. And compare it to an average, uh, single-family resident use. And so the way we might took his data and look to see how much actual hard surface we have on equivalent residential units to give us an E B U equivalent billing unit, and we have about four thousand four hundred square feet of hard surface compared to twenty-two hundred, so we said, okay, well, let's, let's fix that, let's, let's make billing unit equal to an average homeowner. And then I'm going to move on to definition H, system, we completely revised this definition. And also J, I should also mention the utility, so we, because we wanted to be able to connect it directly to the city's phase-two N P D S permit. And so that's where we're looking more closely at, and connecting it directly to the permit that we have. All right, I'm going to jump down now to the next section, it's, it's the titles here, fourteen-ten zero-two-zero, but the, all the meat of it's on the next slide. So we took this section, Policy on Race and Changes, and gutted it and created two new sections, we essentially created two classes here. A residential class and a commercial class, and the commercial class is essentially anything that's not residential. And we wanted to make sure that we were very clear that we are either going to build a residential class or a non-residential class. Councilmember Franch, good question.
Yes, I did, on the previous slide.
Okay.
You were talking about, uh, the twenty-two hundred and the forty-four hundred square feet and, uh, making a relationship between the stormwater or, excuse me, the wastewater and the water.
Yes.
Uh, your store wastewater bill is predicated on your water consumption, right?
Uh, it is, yep.
So.
Well, I'm sorry, let me back up, no, there's a base rate, and then there's, and then wastewater is a fraction of water consumption on top of that, so it's both.
Right, right, but the, there's no square footage calculations that's used when you're determining what the base or the incremental wastewater charges are.
No, it's not a square footage, correct.
So I'm just wondering how you are relating C there, um, when you were explaining how you, you came, went from twenty-two to forty-four.
Oh, okay, so the, the stormwater utility in the past has used, uh, definition of an E B U as impervious area, well, we have a lot of, the, the, the new Stormwater Manual doesn't really talk about impervious area, it talks more, focuses more on hard surfaces. Because we have so many hard surfaces that are pervious but have a similar effect as pervious or impervious surfaces. So we're walking away from the term impervious or pervious when we're just calling them hard surfaces now. Um, and the reason we're adjusting this is because a single-family residential lot doesn't, on average, doesn't have twenty-two hundred square feet of hard surface anymore, it has forty-four hundred square feet. So it has larger roof, rooftops, uh, larger driveways, larger patios and everything else, so we said that we know of the twenty-two hundred square foot house for hard surface no longer exists, it's really a forty-four hundred square foot house, and Mike has, we'll look at it later, a whole graph of how that looks about all of our lot, residential lots in the neighborhood and how much actual square footage they have, some of them are tens, tens of thousands of square feet. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, you, you mentioned that, uh, it's either going to be, uh, commercial or residential. How do you differentiate between, uh, mixed use, where there's a residential above commercial?
Good question, Mike, do you mind sliding to the, or moving to the next slide? Um, at the top here, under the subsection A, each single-family dwelling unit, each dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit, each residential unit is a duplex, and each manufactured mobile home is one E B U. So that consolidates, i- if you fit into that, any of those categories, you're one E B U. If anything else, then you're, then you're essentially considered commercial, and we bill you based on the amount of hard surface you have.
Yes, so the commercial that, to make it easy, has ten acres and X E B Us, then you subtract the single residential E B U from that.
On, we don't subtract.
Or you double divide it.
I'm sorry, but we, we don't subtract it, we, we divide the amount of square, square footage of hard surface by forty-four hundred to get an equivalent E B Us, and then we use that E B U multiplier to calculate the rate based off of section zero-five-zero below. We'll have a table on that in a bit, so maybe that.
Okay, that will help. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so, um, so that's the policy on rates and charges, we've essentially said, you're either contained within residential, which is essentially paragraph A at the very top, or you're anything else which we're considering a commercial class. Um, one other thing we've done is, is here, we've established that we will, now, right now, we bill in, uh, whole units of E B Us. One E B U, two E B Us, well, that's not necessarily consistent with how we implement the, uh, general facilities charge for stormwater. We allow general facilities charge for stormwaters to be minimum one E B U, but then above that, you can do a fraction of an E B U by ten. And so we said, well, let's be consistent with how we implement our general facilities charges along with our monthly rate, so let's do that consistently, so we're changing that as this proposal shows here. Uh, Councilmember Hines.
Yeah, the, um, the residential units, uh, you go by, no matter what the size of the thing is, you call it one E B U, correct?
For a single-family residential house, that's the way it sits today, you'll see later on in this presentation, we're actually giving options to change that.
Okay, that's where I was heading for, the, and by the way, I assume the E B U thing is a matter of convenience. You can count houses much quicker than you can figure out square footage of, of, uh, uh, hard surfaces. Yeah. No, I think. But it comes down to, you need, you're required to have some sort of a multiplier to convert commercial into an equivalent number of residentials. Okay. To make that. Stand the suspense till we have the, the further discussion, in, in the world of, uh, G I S and Google Maps, um, where everything you look at the plan view, which is wonderful from a hard surface standpoint, I think, because that's the way rain comes from. That, that, that whole thing may be subject to some discussion, you put it that way, so I can stand the suspense, why don't we keep on going and we'll talk about that.
Well, and let, let me just back up one quick second, the, the, the data that Mike was showing in his G I S layers, we purchased that data to identify hard surfaces in the city from a third-party vendor, and it is, it, it is as close as they can provide us with hard surfaces based on actual measurements and, and some very good accuracies.
Okay, the, these are what, satellite type analysis?
I, I'm, well, they're, they're, they're aerial, ortho photos, aerial photos, they're flown by aircraft, not satellites.
Okay, great.
Mike, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I'll just jump in that the hard surfaces were collected, uh, via LiDAR, uh, if you're not entirely familiar with that, it is low-flying aircraft. Um, and what they, what they do is they shoot thousands of points of lasers as they cover a surface area. And then what they can do is they can get the, basically the three D elevations and the solid, how solid, yeah, tree canopy is versus a roof versus a sidewalk um, based on those measurements, so, um, yeah, it's, it's much more than just depending on which angle the ortho photograph was taken from. You might get a little bit different measurement by a few feet one way or the other, um, this is just a straight up and down, uh, laser, laser measure of, of hearts, of surfaces in general, we could also order things like tree canopy covers and things of that sort. But due to the way that the thousands of points are collected, they're able to use the software to pull out, okay, what is hard surface versus what is a soft surface being, you know, maybe a tree canopy or something of that sort.
Okay, great, great, yeah, I'd like to discuss that a little further, it, um, when, when it comes time. Because it, it seems to me like before, we, we didn't want to go around measuring houses and a lot of them residences, uh, before the days of LiDAR and a few other things. Uh, and it begs the question, particularly when you're, you're talking fairness. A, a person with a, a trailer with a, a carport on it, which is maybe fourteen hundred square feet. A, a person with a, a trailer with a, a carport on it, which is maybe fourteen hundred square feet. Uh, versus a thirty five hundred square foot Rambler, okay? Sitting on a, a quarter acre lot or something like that. There's a huge difference there, I think. In terms of hard surface that you'd be looking at. So anyway, keep, keep going. I, I guess that'll be a later part of the discussion.
Yep. Alright, so I'm going to jump down now to section zero five zero here, middle of the page. Um, we. Did some major modifications here. We have two different sections on classes and two different listings of, of rates. And, uh, but they were actually the same number. So we cleaned that up. Um, so that all classes will be based off of the same EBU rates. Even though they were listed separately. So, and then we removed subsection C and subsection, or sorry, subsection B and subsection C. B, I believe was um, duplexes, which we changed the definition in the previous section above. And then C, that section of code as it exists today, uh, provides a discount for developers with city approved detention facilities. And through this code, we're proposing to remove that discount. That discount is one of the reasons why we have such great inequities across. Commercial classes. So we think that that should be removed. Um, and here's why. In, in nineteen eighty four, that discount to allow. Commercial developments with a approved detention facility to have only paying one EBU. Was an incentive for developers to construct detention facilities. But as early as nineteen eighty six, all new larger store, all new larger developments. Were required by the city's stormwater manual at the time to have detention facilities. So as of nineteen ninety six and beyond, there was no incentive required. It was just required by the code and the stormwater manual. And now we look at our current stormwater manual from two thousand sixteen. And it actually requires the use of low impact development techniques and infiltration of stormwater. Um, unless that's not feasible. So we're not even going to have detention facilities if you follow our new code. And stormwater infiltrations feasible. So then that would swing us around to the other way of no longer having. New developments, even though they put a lot of. Uh, funds into their stormwater facilities would no longer be allowed to receive that discount because they don't have a detention facility. So again, an equity and we're trying to eliminate the, the, that through this code changes. So that's a quick summary of the code. There's another page, but there was, there were very few, uh, changes on that. So any questions on the code changes at this point? Okay, we'll proceed. Next, we're going to talk about rate structure options. And this is getting into what a couple councilmembers have already touched on. So we talked loosely about redefining the EBU. Current rate is based on twenty two hundred square foot average house. And the actual is, is forty four hundred square feet. We're going to look at that graph in just a minute. But we're proposing that we have two different options to create subgroups within residential classifications. We essentially have subgroup, option one is to have two subgroups, one and two for small and large. So we'll take that forty four hundred. Average number. And if you're less than the average, you're a small. If you're larger than the average, you're a large. And then there's the option of creating three subgroups, small, medium and large. Um, using a, a definition of what the standard deviation is. I don't want to get into statistics too much, but most of you probably understand what a standard deviation is off of here. So using that standard deviation, we would create, the, the medium would be essentially the average. Less one standard deviation up to one, above one standard deviation and then small would be completely less than that and large would be above. The average plus one standard deviation. And so I'm going to, I think the next slide, Mike, is that the, the graph? Yeah, so this will maybe help look at the, the data. So the red line, so I'm sorry, so this graph shows. The count of all properties that are based off of hard surface area. And you can see it goes from. One thousand one hundred twenty four square feet of hard surface all the way up to thirty four thousand square feet of hard surface. Of course, you get up to those big hard surface square footages and there's not very many houses. But you can see the red line is the average and you can see that statistical bell curve here. And then the yellow line is one standard deviation either side of the average. Um, and so what we're saying here is, let's look at the. Uh, single family residential houses and the hard surfaces and let's either draw a hard line at the red line, the average or the mean. And take everybody to the left as a small house or everybody to the right as a large house. Or take everybody in the middle between the two yellow lines. That's a medium sized house. And then go to the other side, other extremes, the left of the yellows are small and to the right of the yellows are hard, or sorry, large, with hard surface. So, um, staff is recommending that we have two subgroups. That we essentially take that average, the red line, mean, and split it and say if you're below that line, you're a small and if you're above that line, you're hard. And then small houses, small with, how, lots with small, low amount of hard surface, less than four thousand four hundred. Square feet would be um. Paying one EBU. If you're a large, you'd be paying one point five EBUs. Now, those numbers can change. This is just what staff's proposing at this point. Any questions on this? Because this is where we're going to jump into commercial classes after this. But this is residential. Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, this is, this is very relevant to what I was talking about before. Um, couple of questions. If we break it up that way, uh, just looking quickly at the numbers. I, I'm assuming that red line is an average, not a median.
Correct. I think, Mike, it's, it's a mean, it's an average, yeah.
Okay, so if there's a lower rate than the current going rate, let's say for the ones that are under forty four hundred, okay? Um, the, a- and there's a, there's a larger number below there. Uh, it seems like we're going to lose some revenue in this discussion. That we're going to have to make up some way to be equivalent to where we are today in terms of rather.
Bob, the, the big. The big impact is going to be a major shift from commercial. Because right now commercials being divided by twenty two hundred. So if I have, if I have ten thousand square feet of EBU, I'm paying five times that residence. If you change me to forty four hundred, I'm now down to two, two and a half. And that to me. That to me is a, is an unwarranted. Uh, I like, I like the consistency of. My opinion with having with three classes, a, a small, a medium and a large. What we can do is tailor. Uh, when we get a final count, we can look at how many EBUs we actually have in the commercial residential. And then bring down the twenty two hundred residents as low as possible. And then make everybody grade eight from there. The, the nice thing about that method would be. We maintain the balance between commercial and residential. That wouldn't shift.
Great. I, I like the small, medium, large, because I'm assuming here that. The amount of data that you have to gather for square footage is the same, whether you divide it into two pieces versus three pieces. So from an administrative standpoint, it, it's not costing you anything more to go to, to three classes of residential. Versus two classes of residential.
But it, it will cost us more in operating costs because we will have to then subdivide our residential classes. And on the utility billing side, it will cost us more to manage. But you're right, it's, as far as revenue side, it's not. It's just the utility billing and operational costs will increase.
Okay, I, 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 in terms of equity, I like, I like the three billing classes better than the two.
I, I also think the, the smaller starting point equates better with a multifamily.
Yeah.
I think that's more representative of a, of a, um, a rental property. Um, especially within a, a building, you know, a multi, you know. Uh, you, somebody with thirty forty units, I would expect their square footage to be closer to twenty two hundred than, than the forty four.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, I've heard. One support from councilmember Heinz to go to three, staff recommended two. If, if there's no other comments, we'll just take that, I guess, and, and continue moving that. Those options forward without any definite, uh, direction.
There's, there's, from my standpoint, there's absolutely no additional work to laying out both methodologies. And allowing council to see, okay, this is going to be the financial impact of the three classes versus two classes. And where the money is being generated now within commercial and residential and how that would change. By going to either option.
Okay, we'll keep both options for now then. Okay, Mike, you mind moving forward to the next slide? Okay, now we're going to talk about commercial customers. And we're going to talk about how they're currently being billed and how their proposed change code, the code changes. Will have, have commercial customers being billed. So we have a table before you and maybe this will answer some of the questions that you have. But we've got some example commercial customers on the left. And then we show how much hard surface they have based on our calculations. Currently billed number of EBUs, the proposed EBUs based off of. One EBU being forty four hundred square feet. The current annual fees they pay based on their current billed EBUs and the proposed annual fees based on the proposed EBUs. So you can see there are some that reduce. Harbor Plaza goes from two hundred forty EBUs to one hundred twenty. Their stormwater annual fee is forty four thousand dollars. And then it goes, it's, it's essentially more than cut in half. But then you've got Target, Home Depot, Costco, Albertsons, who for over a decade have been paying one EBU, a hundred and eighty dollars a year. Going up to fourteen eighteen twenty two seven thousand. So. That's just a, a snapshot of what we're looking at doing. And you can see we're not losing money. We're not trying to. Increase our revenue here. We're just trying to fix an inequity and, but it's not costing us revenue by doing this. Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, um, it's interesting that for, they've got the one EBU, all are residents of, uh, Gig Harbor North along, um. Morgan Boulevard. It begs the question, is that one EBU contractual? Is this thing buried somewhere in development agreement? We don't know about.
No, no, it has nothing to do with it. It's just the examples. If you want us to pull examples from the south end, we could do that too.
Okay, okay. So it's, it's, it's not a, it's not a legal issue.
No.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It, it is a legal issue in the sense that. The, you know, first bullet point, the RCW, it's, it's the one thing that we're prescribed to do and that's to. To treat one commercial different from another commercial. And I don't think, I don't think we're, we're anywhere near that gross level of, of inconsistency. But. I'd rather not have it.
Right. But I think councilmember Heinz's question was, was there a development agreement that, that said they only pay one EBU? And that's not the case. Councilmember Rodenber.
Yeah, one would think that, uh, uh, commercial customers like Target, Home Depot. And, and Costco would be upset at the difference in what they're having to pay. But I think not. I think that it, the other places where they have stores. Uh, they're probably paying a higher rate than they are here. And it would just make them thankful that they got a break for as long as they did. So I don't think they're going to be too upset about. Uh, being charged same as they would, uh, at other locations.
Uh, yes, you're absolutely right. I would agree with you, councilmember Rodenber. We took out of this presentation, but it's in the open house presentation and we can provide it to you in a separate format. We presented at the Public Works Committee meeting also. We have a very large table that is actually kind of hard to read on this screen, but it shows many jurisdictions in Western Washington. Uh, and whether or not they have the same type of discount. And you will see that most jurisdictions of Western Washington, these commercial entities are paying what are more in the range of the proposed annual fees. They're, this is an anomaly in Gig Harbor that they're paying such low annual stormwater fees. And, and so we're not consistent with other jurisdictions.
Yeah, about half we, half those we surveyed were not giving any discount. For private facilities and the, I would say the average discount for. For locally maintained facilities was on the order of fifteen to twenty percent.
Yeah, so ours is significant discount compared to everywhere else.
And I would point out that, um, Harbor Plaza will see a great reduction. Yeah, so there is, there are some that will benefit from this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're, the Target, the Home Depot, the Costco, the Albertsons. Were they, um, getting this one EBU because of stormwater detention ponds that they put on, put in? Or how did they? Get to one?
Yeah, that's exactly why. In the code, as it reads today, it says, if you have a stormwater detention system. You're going to only be charged one EBU per parcel.
Oh, okay.
And right now, like I said before, as of nineteen ninety six, I believe that's the date. The stormwater manual is in place, required them to install detention systems. So why would we give somebody a discount if it's a requirement?
Well, on top of that, the, the detention is only that. It detains it for a while. That water eventually does get into our storm system, does it not?
Yep, it, it does. And we're, we're going away from the, the whole. Uh, theory that we need to charge a stormwater rate based off of flow coming off a site. Because like I said, according to our current manual, there can be no stormwater runoff coming off a site because it'll all be infiltrated. And we still have to operate our stormwater utility. So we still have to receive revenue, even if no stormwater runoff comes off any sites.
It's, it's real important to, we always remember that the, the NIPD's regulations. It's not because of runoff, it's because of pollution. And therefore it's, whether they have onsite detention or not, it's the, it's the rainwater hitting all the manmade structures. And yes, it may be locally contained, but it's going into our groundwater. And that's why we, that's why the city has to do all the monitoring, all the planning, all the, the program stuff is, is to pay attention to that and to keep it. Minimal impacts to the environment.
Yeah, and, and the second word in the NIPD's National Pollution District or NPDS is pollution. So.
But, but isn't the theory of a stormwater detention pond and why they put that in so some of those pollutants settle out? And less of it goes i- in a, into the stormwater and, and more of it settles out?
Yes, that is the theory that mo- most of it does. But like I said, even if no stormwater runoff comes off any sites, we still have to manage our stormwater utility.
No, I, I understand. Yeah.
If you remember back, uh, councilmember Franch, the, that initial breakdown of where, where we spend our money. It's, it's all to do with maintaining the public highways. The, the flow is not coming off of properties. It's, it's managing the, it's managing the surface water. And the pollution that are coming down our streets by dint of, of having transportation.
Okay.
I was about to make that point.
The, the orange wording here on your screen, uh, you, you probably read that. Um, there's inconsistencies, RCW rises with discretion and we need to consider implementation due to some other. Uh, the potential financial impact. So those are things that are guiding our, uh, recommendations here in these code changes. Okay, um. Next slide, I believe. Yeah, so we do recognize that some commercial customers will have. Uh, little to no adjustments. We've heard with this new concept. We have heard through the suggestion processes from the public and council that, well, if we're going to have significant impact on some of these. Like we had on the table before, there is going to be significant impact. Maybe we should have a schedule for implementation of those changes. And so what we're proposing is to. Put together a schedule to allow those. Sites that will have significant increases and I'm, I'm using the number here, ten EBUs or more increase. That we allow them options to, uh, implement their rate change over the course of multiple years. Option one is two years, option two is three years and we can go from there, but. Um, but anyone less than ten EBUs would just be. Um, but anyone less than ten EBUs would just be immediately uh, receiving the new rate. And just for reference, an increase of ten EBUs at the current rate. Will increase monthly stormwater utility payments by about a hundred thirty four dollars a month. So just as a reference. Councilmember Rodenberg.
I would think the, the commercial. Places, uh, I, I think I saw that the largest one is only gonna increase twenty two thousand dollars. And I. I'm not necessarily in favor of giving them a, a step increase because twenty two thousand dollars to them is, is nothing. Uh, you know, absolutely nothing in it compared to the cost of them doing their business.
Okay, well, we can come back with um, options to have no increase or no scheduled increase uh, or two or three and then. We can have that final discussion when we present it to council later in twenty twenty two. Councilmember Woo.
Thank you. So um, do we know if there are any small businesses that are going to be affected with over ten EBUs?
Um, we haven't gone into that breakdown yet. That's something that Ashley and Lisa have been trying to work on and, and just have a much better idea of. Who's going to be affected. Ashley, do you recall how many, was it three or four hundred accounts that we're looking at that are gonna be affected?
My apologies, I'm, I'm not yet back up to speed with Lisa on.
Okay. It wasn't thousands of accounts, it was, it was, I thought in the order of three or four hundred, if I remember.
I believe, I believe our total commercial list is, is on the order of two to three hundred.
Okay, there you go. So what, we're gonna go through, we'll, we'll be going through that um, and presenting that to council next year when we make a formal. Uh, ordinance proposal.
Great, thank you.
It's perfectly possible that we could see a. A not insubstantial decrease in the base rate. Which would mitigate some of the, the commercial impact as well. Which is, you know, why I'm. I'm real hesitant that I. I think, I think it's gonna have to be fluid. We're gonna. When we come back and have all the numbers and you're gonna be able to see exactly, okay. Here's my five options and, and you know what, this is. We can live with this.
Okay, great, thanks.
But it'll, it will be completely. There's nothing, there's nothing cast in stone. You guys want two years, four years, we can make this work. From an implementation standpoint.
Yeah. So one thing I just want to point out before we move on from this slide is that. We do have. We, we, we do have our rate study coming up that will be after this and we can. We can. Look at total revenues at that point, we don't have to try and fix everything at once. We recognize we're not going to fix everything at once, but we just want to get to a point where we can. Get these inequities ironed out. Okay, um, next slide, please, Mike. Okay, next step, we're gonna go away from this study session, we're gonna develop final ordinance and final numbers. And in December and January, we're gonna then have a public hearing and presentation of first reading of ordinance for the council in January or February. Uh, with the effective date of the ordinance to be determined. Um, we're gonna be working with utility billing to see just how fast and when the best time to implement. An effective date such as this will be, so. Uh, all of that, we're going to be ironing out before we get to the presentation to, of the ordinance to council. Councilor Rodenberg.
Yeah, I, I hope this doesn't sound like too much of a, an educated question, but uh. The newer, we've had some new. Hard services that are just in the UGA. Uh, do they pay our utility rates, like for instance, across the street from? The prison and over there where Tacoma Screw is. Do they pay our rates or they pay to somebody else?
Only those. Uh, properties that are within city limits will pay our rates, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well. Oh, Councilmember Heims.
Yeah, just uh, just uh, I guess you're in the wrap up phase here, but.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think this is a, a much more equitable way of looking at it. And I also think heaven forbid, it's a. A much more defendable way. To explain, hey, this is our rate structure. It's based on. Surface area, okay, basically. Uh, hard surface area and we actually tailored our system around that, okay? As opposed to some arbitrary thing of one EBU there. Uh, uh, some other formula. It also wipes out the commercial to residential inequity. And depending on how many classes we divide residential into, I think it also helps with equity there as I mentioned before. Uh, it, it, it works to say, yeah. If you got a bigger place, yeah, you're gonna pay more money. You got more. Uh, uh, hard surfaces, you're gonna pay more money. If you got smaller hardcore surfaces, less money. So I think it's very, uh, it's very good from an equity standpoint. I think it's also very good from a uh. Uh, I hate to say it, a legal challenge standpoint, if, if it ever came to that. So, uh, I'm, I'm all pro for this.
I think, I think the, the upshot of doing the residentials. Um, because there are very few in the, the survey that we did, there's very few. Cities and towns in the West that are doing. A gradation of single family residences. And I, I think that's a huge step up. Um, you know, you have a half million dollar house, should you really be paying the same? With a one car garage and a Rambler, so. I think there's a lot of, a lot of positives there.
Okay, uh, Mike, next slide is just the closing slide. Um, but thank you for your time. Uh, we're gonna be here to answer questions along the way, but we're gonna develop, further develop this ordinance. One item, by the way, that came up um, just recently on this ordinance, it's not in the version that you have is. We were just talking on a staff level. About. What if somebody hasn't, wants to appeal how much hard surface they have? Well, we need to put a process in our code. That says if you're gonna appeal this, that how, how that, what that policy, what that process would look like. So we're gonna add that in there and you'll see that in the next version, but we're gonna continuously uh. Refine it and we'll be back soon, but if you have any questions, please feel free to let us know. Um, we, many of you will be um. Well, most of you will be, hopefully we'll be seeing you in the new year. I, I know that I see the attendees list that there's at least one. Uh, council member elect there too, so um, we hopefully will be able to. Give a much briefer focused presentation when we present this in the. First of the year. Okay.
Councilmember Markley has her hand up.
Oh, thank you, couldn't see it in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Luke. I was just gonna unmute real quick. Um. Jeff and Ashley, thank you so much for this presentation. I, this is, this is great. Um. Forgive me if you already addressed this, but going back to Councilmember Luke's question about small businesses. Are they gonna be calculated on this, like on a sliding scale like residential where if it's a, if it's a small shop downtown that's like a thousand square feet? Versus the shop next door, which might be three thousand square feet. How or, or over four thousand square, square feet? Are they gonna pay the same amount because they're, they're both commercial? Or are they, is there gonna be another? Avenue for. I guess just based on the size of the business would. Would, would, does that matter? Does that make a difference or are they all gonna be the same across the board?
No, it'll, they won't be the same across the board. There will be a minimum of one EBU, no business will pay less than one, no, nobody. Right, pay less than one EBU. Um, but if, if one of the businesses is. Let's just use the easy number of forty four hundred square feet of impervious area. And the business, a- and so they would pay one EBU, business across the street is. Twice that, eighty eight hundred, they're gonna pay. Two EBUs.
Okay.
And it'll just be completely proportionate to how much hard surface they have. So essentially the size of the business. Size would meaning roof and. Uh, parking if the parking is private.
Okay, and yeah, I, I would. I would say depending on. Each of those businesses and how much of an increase there will be to each of those businesses. You know, maybe Costco, Target, Home Depot, it won't affect them, but it, it could greatly affect some of our smaller businesses that are still struggling. To recover from COVID, so I would. Definitely want there to be some sort of a. Uh, sliding adjustment for that, just a preparation, you know, period for them to. Get up to that new rate, um, should, should they need that? Some of the businesses may say, okay, great, we can go right to that because they're financially okay. But others may need to go up a couple steps, you know. Every month go up another step or every billing cycle. Is it possible for us to, to do that if there are businesses that are struggling or residences that are struggling with the increases?
Well, uh, we could put that in there. We're not proposing that right now. We could put that in there.
Okay, it's just a thought, it's just a thought for, I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, let me, let me just, just um. Use something for reference here, uh. Ten EBUs, it, it's kind of hard to, to fathom, but ten EBUs under the proposed code changes. Would be forty four thousand square feet. That's essentially one acre. So roughly you could say anyone, and, a- anyone that's an acre or less. Um, is going to be paying their. Their rate immediately upon. Effective date. And ten EBUs, um, let's say one thirty four increase per EBU. No, ten, ten EBUs would be paying one hundred thirty four dollars a month more. So a hundred thirty four times twelve. So let's say if you have a one acre property, ten EBUs essentially. You're gonna go from paying. A little over a hundred dollars a year, hundred, hundred and eighty dollars a year to sixteen hundred dollars a year. So it's about fourteen hundred dollars a year increase. It's not at all the Costco. Home Depot, Albertsons increases. It's, it's fairly low. On that size. And just for reference, at the corner of um, Peacock Hill and North Harborview. You know, those buildings that are there, they, they used to be called the luncheon buildings. I don't know if people still know them as luncheon buildings. Um, but that's less than an acre. So we're, we're, that, that site is about nine EBUs. Maybe eight, so they're gonna have even less of an increase than that fourteen hundred dollars a year, so.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I would expect, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong. But the. The small business. Is gonna be evidenced by the strip mall. Where you've got. One building, one roof and you have ten. Um, units. Within that. And those would probably be already be split up. The proprietor, the property owner is probably sending them a proportionate bill. Already. And so uh, we would not expect the change. The, the square footage isn't, isn't changing for them. It's a, it's merely a. Uh, a result of, of. Um, in fact, you, you would expect them to actually remain the same.
And, and like, on that table we showed, in fact, Mike, would you slide back to, what slide was that? Um, the table on the commercial? There are one more. So let's just look at three, three thousand six Judson Street, that's. For this, the shopping center. So that's a strip mall. They have. That's, that's not every parcel there, but that's twenty nine. EBUs. If we propose to change the EBU to forty four hundred square feet, it's gonna have reduced, so. That strip mall is actually gonna, they're gonna, all those small businesses. At least the property owner is gonna have a reduction in their stormwater rate. And the same thing is gonna happen at Harbor Plaza. That property owner is gonna have a huge reduction in their stormwater rate. So those small businesses will actually have, see reductions.
That's kind of a, that's kind of a nice uh, hidden part of the math and the data is that. As the EBU square footage increases, it actually does bring down. The cost once you do your multiplier. Um, so it's not necessarily super clear, but that, that is the effect of increasing the square feet.
Okay, well. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you.
And uh. Any questions, feel free to call or email staff, otherwise we will be seeing this topic uh, first of the year.
Thank you.
You're good, thank you.
Are there any more items on the agenda?
That's it.
Do we need to make a motion to um? Leave?
It would, it would be helpful.
I move to adjourn.
We'll do adjourn.
A second.
All favor? All right, thank you.